Coming semester, I'm doing four papers.
Raise, and if it's not suitable with everybody, majority commissioners, then we can try another one. I'm not going to give up on it, but this is just another one. And this one is, I hope everybody got their departments and their pay raises, because I did send Mr. Feria and Mr. Garcia to each one and make sure they got a copy and signed for it, because I don't want to have the same problem that I had the last time, that some people would get it, some people didn't get it. And I did say that we're going to discuss it today. So, for those of you that are here, let me emphasize that what we did was, we should get an employee who was earning ten dollars an hour to eleven dollars, that person would end up with a salary of twenty-one thousand and four hundred, that would be the minimum an employee of a county would get. So to go from today's, and we're basing it on today's salary, not ten years ago, five years ago, or last year, this year's salary, we would have to increase the bottom one thousand seven hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents to the bottom employee to get them to twenty-one thousand four hundred. Now, knowing that, what we suggested was giving everybody the same amount on their raise, one thousand seven hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Now, that doesn't mean that everybody's going to get the same. The second part of that salary is, you would base your longevity on the one percent. So if you're making, I'm going to give you an example, if you're making forty thousand dollars last year, we're basing it on last year's salary, today's salary, what you're earning today, you would get four hundred dollars extra. That's the one percent. So a person that's making forty thousand would get two hundred dollars added to the one thousand seven hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. A person that's getting forty thousand would add four hundred dollars to that. A person that's making sixty thousand would get six hundred dollars added to that. That's the one percent. Now, that is what we discussed, that would be your longevity. So the more you're here, the more you're making money, that one percent would be added to that. Now, I know this is not perfect, but this is the best we could do to make it equitable for everybody. And I think it's a good proposal, and again, if it's not, then we'll try another one. Now, what I included on this one was what you're earning exactly this year, not last year, not the coming year. We also did not include on this one, I know that the sheriff wanted the deputies be the base pay of thirty-four thousand dollars. Well, there's nine people with this pay raise and with a one percent that are close to the thirty-four thousand, so if we include those nine people, it would increase our budget six thousand dollars, which I think is good. But that's up to the commissioners, if they want to make sure that they include that thirty-four thousand, we would have to include six thousand dollars to our budget. The second part is, what do we do if you do want, I know that the commissioners want a grant administrator, we need to include that in the budget too. It was not, you know, we haven't decided if we're going to have one, and where are we going to start it? Then we also have to include in the budget, the new auditor for this coming year, because Mr. Lowe is going to retire, and so where do we start him at? You know, we don't have a basis for starting the auditor, do we start him at eighty-four, where he left after thirty-two years? Do we start him at seventy thousand, you know, at the beginning? We don't have one. We also don't have a job description for the administrative, uh, grant administrator. So those are the things we're going to be working with. So with that, I'm going to open up, anybody, any department or elected official that wants to discuss that base and see what they want to bring up to take.
I'd like to hear from anybody else.
Anybody? Go ahead, Ms. Martinez.
Okay.
Okay, but before we start, let me emphasize, these are not new positions. We're going to attack that later on.
Okay.
These are what we're earning this year, just this year. We haven't added new positions, the people earn this year, everybody this year would be included at a seventeen thirty-seven fifty plus one percent. Not new positions, we're going to attack them on a different work.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
And I'll actually be very brief.
And for the record, identify yourself.
I'm Garcia O'Monday, and I'm the county librarian, and good morning, everyone. So, I was really pleased with the latest that you proposed, because it's actually very, very close to what I offered today. So, the only thing different, I do have my new part-time positions on here, but you can just regard that. I was also looking at changing people's titles, just to more closely reflect what we actually do every day, so I'm just going to share this with you all, and you can consider it. I don't want to keep this here too much time.
Twenty, oh, I'm sorry, let the record show.
Hey, how's it going?
Twenty, human resource director called that she's not going to be in today, so we will take notes, and we'll have Ms. Martinez take notes for her too. Okay? All right. Anybody else?
Yes, Judge.
Go ahead, Mr. Attorney.
Roger, attorney, health inspector, county health inspector, risk management officers. I reviewed this plan with my staff, and they're very pleased with it, I'm pleased with it, and I certainly hope that the commissioners adopt it when they do.
Okay, now, I also forgot to make a note that, if you notice, the average for everybody was two thousand dollar raise. That's the average that everybody got. Now, that's the closest we can get to be fair to everybody. I'm not saying it's fair, but it's the closest we can get to being fair. I also going to recommend that we add this to the base pay when we adopt it, it's not going to cost the budget any more money, it's just a line item. So we're going to add whatever we agreed on to the base pay, that way we won't have a problem like we're having right now with the auditor, with everything else. Okay? Is anybody, go ahead, Mr. Burke.
Hostel Steever precincts raise. I, again, I forgot to debate for sound applicable. The only thing I was looking at is the vehicle allowance, and I was asking for five hundred dollars more, and the reason for it is the insurance on vehicles keeps going up this year, it's over two thousand, it's gone up every year since I've been in council, unless something really happens, I don't see it not going up this year or so.
Now, I don't know if you understood, the wish list, we're going to attack it later on. Our first priority is the pay raises, employees' salaries, that's the first. And then, we're going to try to see what we can do with all the wish lists. Hopefully, we can get a lot of the wish lists that people want, but right now, we're dealing only with the pay raises.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Ms. Martinez.
Christina, I asked the county extension office, and all I'm here is, I'm just requesting a position title for Sherry Green, that moved her from secretary to officer. And in my original paper, I included a public district manager.
Okay.
For, you know, that people.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Anybody else? Go ahead, Sheriff.
Commissioner, Judge, Joe Frank Martinez. Sheriff, I concur with what the court is trying to do to make it fair for everyone, but I'd like the flexibility on a couple of employees. Those are grant positions that are a hundred percent funded, refunded, or reimbursed to the county, and those are HIDA positions.
What page? Did you get a budget? It's one forty-four.
I don't have numbers on my page, Commissioner.
Well, mine, it says one forty-four. Okay, mine, mine's community center, one forty. Oh, okay. What is it? It's grant, it's HIDA?
Yes.
I have a one forty-one. Okay.
There's, without using names, there's two analysts in there. The HIDA budget didn't allow for a percentage for salary increase, but the other two positions...
Okay, you have, I have Eagle Pass Task Force, Amistad Intelligence, Amistad Intelligence, and Go Real Task Force.
Yes, sir, the two Task Force positions. There's about four thousand dollars there for one of the employees, and I'm just asking the court to allow me the flexibility to try to work something out, so we can, actually, thirty-nine hundred, thirty-nine hundred and sixty-four dollars there.
So these individuals will not get raises?
Uh, no, sir.
They're not showing a raise, do you know why that?
Because they're on HIDA.
Because of the HIDA?
Yes. And I just found this out late yesterday, that there's a little bit of money there, and I'm just, I need the flexibility to try to work something out, so at least get two of these individuals a salary increase. And it's a hundred percent reimbursed back to the county.
I'm fine with that.
I don't have a problem with it. You have a problem with it, Commissioner?
Why don't you just make a motion and take a vote, or make a motion to allow the sheriff to adjust those salaries based upon what he has within the bounds of the grant?
Second, Detective. Okay, there's a motion, second. Any more questions, discussions? All those in favor in the table, I say aye. Aye, although opposed, nobody, five aye.
Thank you.
Sheriff, on the other two, are you going to, Sheriff, on the other two that are not getting an increase, are you going to try to eventually bring in some more money for that, or?
What happens, the project manager, for the HIDA program submits that in their funding, and if it's available, it's there, we just have to go back and get it adjusted then. But this year, for some reason, they didn't, they didn't put that in, for those two positions.
Good morning, my name is here, three three, I'm Inspector, just a collector. And this morning, I'd like to say that I was very pleased with the proposed amount here for my office. I would like to request a raise for one of my employees, Maria Scott, she does motor registration, and she also acts as a collector, and I would like to see that she gets a little bit more than what she's getting right now, because she's doing a dual job. We've had this position for three years.
So what is, what is the amount that you're requesting?
I would say at least another, another five hundred or six hundred dollars, because she's going to be the one, because they're lowest paid right now. And she does a dual position, and she does a very good job, and that's about the only one that I can assure you of. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Judge, real quick, I think we've done a pretty good job with this. If you'll look at the percentages, this court usually tries, and the court has always tried to get between a three and four percent raise. Right now, if you look, the amount of money that would be given in raises, compared to the budget, is like a five point six percent raise. I was, so, I mean, I think it's a, it's a good budget, it's a good raise for everybody. I don't believe that we need to start picking and choosing individuals within this budget to raise and not to raise. You know, I think it's a good budget. There is, there is one, there is one department that the training, the amount of actual hard dollars that it costs to train these individuals, and then we lose them, is the sheriff's department. You know, and it's actually hard dollars, I mean, we spend, what, six months? What do we spend on training? Not dollar amounts, but actually, actually, the time amount, I mean, the dollar amount...
Six months, a year, what do we spend on training?
We spend on the training, by the time they get off their FTO program, we're looking at about nine months. In that time period, you're looking at anywhere from thirty to forty thousand dollars per individual, that basically is taxpayers' money. They're gone in two or three years, that money's basically been on the way, so we need to find some way to retain our deputies.
And that's why I asked at the beginning that, to include the nine people to come up to thirty-four thousand, it would include, we would actually have to include six, about six thousand dollars, Frank and I discussed in here, about six thousand dollars more to bring up those nine people to thirty-four thousand. So, what I'm requesting is the court make a motion, as we're working with the budget, to include that, that in a motion, to include the bottom to come up to thirty-four thousand, that way we include it when we're working on the budget.
And this is, this is also something, Judge, I think the court as a whole, the commissioners also as a whole, had talked about it.
Right.
And, you know, I guess we included it to a vote. The other thing is, we were throwing around a three hundred million dollar increase in budget.
Right.
I just, I'd ask Sherry if she would look it up, and an increase on our, on our evaluations, what's actually going to be taxable? She's coming up with about a hundred and thirty-three million, six hundred and fifty-eight. If you look at those numbers, if you look at those numbers, we will pretty much eat up the increase in what we collect in taxes with this. Like I said, we, we talked about a three hundred million dollar number, but a little while ago, she, she just texted me, I asked her to look at, she said it was about a hundred and thirty-three million.
There's a lot of protests in this, this go-around, so that number's going to change.
Yeah, and she'd said about a hundred and thirty-three, she did some percentages, and she, you know, so I think, just for the court's information, I think we're going to eat up everything that, basically everything that we would gain within our general fund with these raises.
Should we allow people that are not part of the county, as far as employees, to speak with the public?
Yes.
Are you going to tell us that we're doing a good job, or?
Well, actually, Judge Bobes, Commissioner, my name is Sandra Flank, this is my co-chair of the Board of Initiations, and so that, yeah, thank you for your hard work and sincerity in improving the pay for county employees. However, I'd like to step aside. I think Commissioner Owens, that, or Judge Bobes, I forget who brought up the point, how expensive it is to train deputies, and then we don't, the retention is horrible. I think that your effort of increasing the starting pay for them is, is good. I think they might be comparable to the police. One of the reasons, we believe, we studied this issue a lot, and we actually, I think, we have officially brought on the issue of better pay for the, for the deputies. I think one of the reasons why we cannot retain them, even though if this passes and their starting pay comes thirty-four, that if I was to be, become sheriff's deputy, for example, a deputy, I'm not going to know what I'm going to be making on my third year, my fourth year, my eighth year, my tenth year. I am going to be at the mercy of the county commissioners, and you commissioners, with your good intentions and your good heart, might not be here six years from now. And for the sheriff, or for the sheriff to come in and fight for the deputies to get an increase every year is not good. That's why, if I become a deputy, I don't know where I'm going to be in four years. That's why I'm going to start looking to DPS, Port Patrol, Police Department, because there's not a pay scale in place for the deputies. Every law enforcement agency have a pay scale. And I think that that, that is part of the problem. Now, that the proposal of one percent in addition to the one thousand, whatever it is...
One thousand seven hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Thank you, that's good. That's across the board, that's for every county employee, and not to minimize the work of that people do, the employees do for the county, for, for example, the secretary, carpal, the people that work for the county commissioners, not to minimize that. But when you start looking at the deputy at the same level as you do as everybody else, I think that that, that might not be right. The deputies are on call twenty-four seven. They have to have certifications to carry a weapon. So I think it's a little bit different. Perhaps we need a higher standard than most, again, not to minimize what the rest of the employees of the county do. They do work hard, they, you know, what they do in their job, but I think that, they should be treated differently when it comes to money. And I think the biggest challenge for the sheriff's department is that they do not have a pay scale, so they don't know where they're going to be years down the road. And I think that that, that would be too good. I think Judge Bobes, when we listened with you, you had a kind of place for them. I think that you understand the importance of that. When we met with Juanita, she also mentioned, of course, the having a pay scale for them. And I think that that would be a good start, if you were to keep your, what you think about the one thousand, whatever it is, Commissioner, plus a one percent for everybody else, and perhaps start looking at the possibility of establishing a pay scale for the deputies. Thank you.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
Just briefly.
Go ahead.
This one, Commissioner Coronado was in office, he started a pay scale program, and it started to improve and improve, and then it deteriorated. So even though this court would adopt a pay scale for the deputies, such a courts can do away with it. And that, you know, what happens is people start asking to increase the base pay, or some new employee comes in, and they increase that. So every time you make a change in the pay scale, it starts to deteriorate, and that's what happens over the years.
And I think that's why, I think, and thank you for that, Mr. McCruff, but I think that is why commissioners, and people such as yourself, maybe the county auditor, the treasurer, and certainly citizens, need to be vigilant about that, and hold elected officials accountable. And we enjoy doing that, you know? And that you, the court, I can't, I cannot say enough, thank you, I think this is the first time that the court has really taken a really, really serious look in establishing better pay, and establishing, I think, I think we got into trouble, because we don't have job descriptions, I think we got into trouble, because people were leaving, we didn't have a base pay, and people left, and then we hired someone else at the same pay, and it didn't make any sense to us anyway. So there's going to be one reason to watch this court. And we need to start somewhere, it's not going to be created, it's not going to be easy, and some people are not going to get as much money as they think they're retiring to. We need to start somewhere, we need to bite that bullet. And I, again, I can't reiterate enough, if a pay scale was started years ago with Commissioner Coronado, that maybe hasn't been vigilant, maybe we would not be having this discretion right now when it comes to sheriffs. And when the deterioration begins, is when elected officials come and request an increase outside the pay scale, and the court approves it. And so you're looking at two different perspectives, whether you want to treat all employees fairly across the board as county employees, or if you're going to give elected officials the options to come up every time they ask for an increase. And that's, that's something the commissioners need to, and the judges need to decide, if they're going to be looking towards benefiting the entire county personnel, or if they're looking to either benefit their own departments, or help elected officials increase pay at any given time. Right.
But we sit here, I mean, well, I sit here, and I think all of us do, I mean, we're sitting here trying to figure out a way to balance it for all employees. You know, I'm not, I've seen the pay scales that have come up, I've always been one of the ones that doesn't agree with it, I don't agree with setting up a pay scale with the sheriffs. There's one of the reasons that I don't, is because you're locking in future courts to something that there might not be enough money to fund. You know, and like Counselor said, you know, the court can decide not to do it and vote against it, but again, I think that if we set up something for the sheriff, or something, you know, naturally, next year, you're going to get this, because you've been here in this and that. What if there's no money?
Well...
I mean, you have other counties right now that are collecting a lot of funds, and they're sort of sucking air, because they don't, they can't figure out how they're going to go back.
Right.
And that's just, like, right now, I mean, we went up on our values, and we're going to be probably, if we don't get hit with a lot of protests, we're going to be within four thousand dollars of everything that we went up on that end with values, we're going to be within four thousand dollars of what we're going to collect on income, to where, in my personal opinion, if I, if I set up a schedule, and these people think, well, I'm going to get it, then we're making the, the next courts look bad, because we've done something that's going to affect them forever. You know, I think we've done a pretty good job, not only this time, but I've been here five years, and I know that, that one previous time, we brought everything up, especially our, our minimum grade, we went from sixteen thousand to nineteen thousand, and I think we went from twenty-four thousand and changed with the sheriffs to six, to thirty thousand. And I know that the court, even before I was here, had taken it upon themselves to do the same thing, so I think we've come a long way. I just personally think that what we have, and what this court is trying to present right now as a pay scale, is just as close as fair. And I said a little while ago, we're not going to make everybody happy, but I think we're as close to fair as we can get.
Well, you know, you know, if I may, Commissioner Owens, as I was hearing you speak, what came to mind that, if this court, and if this community starts thinking about the what if, or what if this happens, or what if this doesn't happen, we would be extremely stagnant, that's number one. Number two, that your consideration of the future courts, and that you lock them in into something that may not be able to happen, that's honorable of you to think of that, but the previous court in the past, eight, ten, twelve years ago, did not think about you, when they did nothing, and you're in the middle of this mess. So, the what if, you know, what if, that we don't have the money, and we're tied in to pay them that, okay? I don't think that, we would, we would be very stagnant, we would be frozen in, you know, if we were to think of the what ifs, and what ifs. I think that, you know, the county is growing, and the revenue is coming in.
I think, I'm just going to say, we have to, we have to plan, we have to do some type of planning. I just can't go out there and set something in place, but it's going to have to happen. You know, it's, it's all about the dollars, I mean, it needs to make sense.
But it doesn't have to happen. The county government has said...
It was my opinion, and my opinion is, it's real simple, everybody has an opinion, like I said before. You know, it's just an opinion, and we really don't count, so we take a vote. But, but my opinion is, that I don't want to lock future courts in on something that might not be able to be funded. You've been here longer than I have, and you know that the minute we set something up, it's like we must, we deserve it, we're going to get it, you know, we hear that all the time. I personally don't want to do it, and if we take a vote, I'll vote no, and everybody else can vote the way they want.
Your opinion is clear, but what I'm saying is that you never tie the such and what courts, because every court can change it. And so, anytime you set up anything with a county, like you said, you need to make that effort, and then be vigilant that that's consistent throughout, if that's the way you want to do it. But having a pay scale does not guarantee that the deputies are going to make that amount at that time, and the court isn't tied into it. I mean, that's, it's always fluke.
And in memory serves, when we're working with the police department, the problem was that, not the problem, for whatever reason, they have a pay scale, but they were not getting their increase. I don't know how that works, I don't know whether it's in their contract that if they have a certain amount of revenue, but when we were working on that issue, they had not gotten an increase in eight years, or something like this. So, but they did have a step increase, and I don't know what the increments were, but they were there.
What's the starting pay for a police officer?
I think it starts at their academy at twenty-eight, and then they move up to, I think it's right at, if this goes, it'll be...
Now, we're in line with them.
Yeah, we're in line with them.
What, these deputies work overtime? A lot of overtime?
Secondary employment.
Secondary employment?
Yes.
Good. So these salaries aren't necessarily all they take on?
No. On some deputies, it's up, there's a lot of secondary employment, but I have probably, out of the thirty-nine deputies, probably twelve to fourteen were secondary jobs.
Judge, we've...
There's something wrong with that picture, that they have to work a second job to make ends meet.
The second job is with us, making twenty-five bucks an hour, on our grant overtime.
And they're away from their families, so they have to take that second job, whether it be with you.
We can do, we can do away with the grants, and, you know, we can give anything that we want to give, it just depends on what size tax increase the community is willing to take, or what we're going to cut somewhere else in the budget. The salaries consume the largest portion of our budget.
And here's the problem with the biggest...
And there is a, there is a point out there, where your salaries consume so much money, there's nothing left for the employees to work with. There's no money for gas, there's no money for materials, there's no money for cars, there's no money for nothing. So, I agree that the deputies deserve to get paid more money, and we, trust me, since I've sat on this court, we've come a long ways from where they used to be. A long ways.
I remember, yeah, they had to buy their own gear.
But also, the guy down in the ditch, digging a hole, and those guys out fighting fires, they deserve it too.
No question about it, that's the way I started with that.
So, trying to get it balanced, where everybody gets something, you know, and it gets fair and equitable, I mean, those guys that, out there on those fires for days and days and days...
Understood.
They, they deserve it too. I'm not saying these deputies don't deserve it, but I think there's a lot of employees in this county that deserve a lot more than we're worth.
Agreement in that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Coach, thank you.
Go ahead, Coach. Thank you, Judge. Yeah, this point has been made. I've got a few points and I have a motion also I want to make. Commissioner Middleton and I were here eight, ten, twelve years ago and there has not been one year when the court sat here and did nothing. There has always been a raise for each county employee, elected and non-elected. So no one can say that we sat here and did nothing. Something else that we need to look at, Judge, and try to control in some way or another are the salaries of some elected officials. We've got elected officials making over seventy thousand dollars a year, we've got one judge making, is going, is proposed to be making over a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year. Some are just getting up to where they need to be, in my opinion, such as the JPs, but some, again, in my opinion, are getting a little out of hand. It's the taxpayers that pay the salaries of these elected officials. The elected officials are there because they want to be, they ran for office because they wanted to be in that office and we need to look at that. Also, I don't know, Counselor, if we can set a base pay for elected officials, maybe for a year or two while they learn their positions. We had one elected official come in at seventy-four thousand dollars last year with zero experience, actually zero knowledge of the position, while there was another person in that same positions or a similar position, making the same amount that she made, coming in brand new. I don't know if we can set a base pay that's a five, ten thousand dollars lower while that individual, either he or she gets a training and becomes familiar with the duties and responsibilities of that position and then after, whatever the court wishes to say, a year or two, then move them up to the salary that that corresponds to that position with experience. Again, we have some salaries that I really consider that are too high and I think that that is something else that the court needs to look, look at. In the past, we talked about not giving raises for elected officials. I, I don't think that's a solution for everybody, but it definitely needs to be looked at. We have employees that start out at nineteen thousand dollars a year, as Commissioner Middleton said, digging ditches and working hard and, and that's unfair for them as far as the amount of money they're making and the type of work that they do to what some of us are making up here in an office. So-
Commissioner, I wanted to ask you a question.
You can.
You can set up a base. The elected officials are the only positions in the county that benefit from the other elected officials' experience. So if somebody's here twenty years, like you said, somebody who stepped in at one with limited experience would make exactly the same rate.
Exactly.
And in the past, this, not this court, but the courts have chosen not to give salaries, salary increases to the top five electeds and that happened two or three years in a row. So you do have many options and basically the only thing you can't do is pay them less than, I mean, this is discretionary, first of all, less than the salary of nineteen seventy-eight or something like that. And then you can't, it can't be punitive, it can't look like you're punishing them, you're giving them the money to compensate them for the job that they're doing. So that's where your discretion comes in.
Yes. And, and again, I, I would like to see something done or discussed about this at a subsequent meeting. I want us to sit down and ask, I want you to come up with something as far as the schedule for base pay for elected officials and try to see what we can do about the pay of, of elected officials that maybe we feel are, maybe get some input from the rest of the commissioners and the other elected officials and really see where we need to start reining in a little bit. As far as my motion, I'd like to make a motion that all deputies' base salaries be brought up to thirty-four thousand dollars per year. Now, deputies only, not the clerks, not the, the office staff, the deputies, boots on the ground and transporting whatever else categories that they have as deputies. And that the other employees that are there now and worked long ago at thirty-four thousand dollars be adjusted accordingly as far as the percentage, going from thirty-two thousand base that we have now to thirty-four thousand, that those employees be given that percentage of increase also.
Okay. One motion?
Oh, that's second to motion for discussion.
Go ahead.
Are we talking about the patrol division that's within this budget, not criminal investigator, civil, transport?
Page one forty, there's nine.
Services, communication, the patrol division?
Uh, there's several in the patrol division, then we've got-
There's, there's a whole bunch of them throughout the sheriff's court.
Then we've got the civil division, that you've got two at, under the thirty-four thousand and then you've got the transports are all under thirty-four thousand and the increases would be minimal for them. You're talking one thousand, a hundred and forty-eight dollars, forty-seven fifty.
Commissioner, I look at the criminal division, they're all going to be making with this proposal about forty-six thousand.
No, I understand this, but I'm talking about the base.
The base, the base.
Yes, sir.
And services, that's your office staff, I'm assuming?
Yes, sir.
You're just doing patrol though, right?
I'm just, no, I'm doing anybody that's classified as a deputy.
Communications?
Which will be patrol, it will be the civil deputy, the civil, the warrants deputy and the transport deputies.
And your communications? Bailiffs?
No. Right now, I'm just talking deputies.
Everything on page one forty?
Every, well, not-
Well, for patrol?
Yeah, the, the ones that are not at thirty-four, yes, you're correct.
On the patrol deputies, we're talking on base pay, increasing it around twelve hundred dollars, more or less?
Uh, just a little under, yes, sir.
And then adjust the, the current proposed pay to get it to that base pay?
Yes, sir.
For thirty-four. And then, but you also said the rest of them to adjust the percentages?
The, the ones that are under the thirty-four thousand, Commissioner?
Mm-hmm.
There's some that are right under that threshold, thirty-three, five, thirty-three, one.
Thirty-three, one, seven?
Yeah. Percentage wise, if that's going to bring them above the thirty-four thousand, that's what I would like to see done.
There's only one more on that whole page other than the nine on top.
That's thirty-three.
But we're not talking about anybody on the second page under services, communications, bailiffs, court, security, none of those?
No.
There was nine on top and the one in the transport.
Huh?
Yes.
Which one's?
Bailiffs or deputies?
Yeah.
There's, there's one bailiff under, under that, under that amount.
There's one bailiff that's under the thirty-four, the starting pay, not, not his current pay. There's one bailiff that the starting pay is about thirty-two, eight, fifteen hundred dollars or something. And your courtroom security, is it your other bailiff? You've got one, two, three of those starting pays are under the thirty-four and one of them is currently making less than that.
Okay. Okay, but, but that's a line item that's not going to cost us because if we go to thirty-four, they're already making above that.
Only one of them will cost you there, which is one of the bailiffs. I guess you don't have a person in that position, there's no name?
Yeah, you just, you would just start, you just start open.
Okay. But the base pay, increasing to thirty-four would be done, attract new people to join the sheriff's department as deputies.
Okay, we're talking, because this goes back to an issue like we just talked about with the city. When you, when they hire the city, they start them at twenty-something and after they get out of the academy, they go to thirty-four.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. And they go to thirty-four after the academy.
After they get certified.
After they get certified.
Yes, and our, our plan is to start them at thirty-one, one-twenty-five. Once they complete the academy, then they go to thirty-four.
Then you adjust. Okay.
Why would we start them at thirty-one, one-twenty-five when their base pay was already at thirty? I mean, I'd feel more comfortable starting with thirty and then you kick them up.
Well, we don't have any base pays anywhere close. I mean, the lowest base pay we've got on a deputy is thirty-two.
Thirty-two's eight sixty-two. But there, let me see if these include, we just had a recent hire.
So you're doing, there's eleven of them, right? Nine, ten, eleven, there's eleven positions. There's nine on that one.
That are not actually in the county.
I'll get that information, Commissioner. We, we just had a, a recent hire and I wanted to make sure that, for me, I started-
I, I agree with you that while they're in the academy, the thirty-four should not be the salary. Once they graduate, get certified, get out, then at that point, they go to thirty-four, but they need to start in that position at thirty, thirty-one, wherever that number is in that.
The base base right now is thirty-two.
Yeah.
Thirty-two, eight, that.
Yeah, because we just said that would, the reason that these went up were because we'd adjusted it with the seventy-seven something.
Okay. Okay, so I'll, I'll go ahead and amend my motion, Judge, first, to include the basis in this motion. And secondly, that as they, they are hired and go into the academy, that their salary be at thirty-two, eight, sixty-two, fifty. Once they graduate from the academy, that they go to, to the base pay of thirty-four thousand.
Second accepts.
Okay. All right, there's more to it or discussion? Go ahead.
I'd like to make another comment. On communications, that's a very critical position and right now, we're flirting with critical. And it's-
Can we, can we take that vote? Let's do one at a time, if you don't mind.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, any more discussion in this motion? If not, all those in favor, indicate by a single eye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
All right, now, that, like I said before to, I think Christina and I think somebody else, that the new positions, we're going to discuss them later.
Yeah, there's not a new position.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, the communications, we're looking at on the fifth page. We're, we're talking about a couple, a couple of inspectors.
I wish the print was a little bit bigger so I could see it, but I can't.
You got, you got six people under communications?
Yes, there's six people under communications and actually there's one communications operator that's funded through the National Park Service, the environment base.
Yeah, that's over there. That's a grant funded, right?
That's grant funded, it's reimbursed to the county. I think that the county gets thirty-five thousand a year for that position.
Where does the rest of the money go?
It, this probably goes into the fringe or whatever, I, I don't know where it goes.
So these salaries and, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, but they wouldn't take, I mean, if, if they're at twenty-three and you're making, and you're bringing in thirty-five, your fringe wouldn't take you from twenty-three to thirty-five, would it?
How much is it? Thirty-three or twenty-three?
Twenty-three.
Their salary, their current salary is twenty-three.
Twenty-three, four fifty-two, fifty.
Your fringe wouldn't take you to thirty-five.
You'd get thirty-five.
Yeah, your social security and your, your social security and then your retirement, if we did the eleven percent, would be right at the twenty-eight thousand.
Yeah, twenty-eight, so you're still, I don't know where the rest of the money would be going unless it's covering some, some other-
Your insurance would cover the rest of that. Your, your, your insurance would cover the rest of that, thirty-five.
Yeah, because you're-
Twenty-seven, eight something with the retirement and the social security.
The insurance for the employee.
And then once you do the insurance, you'll be bucking the twenty-eight.
And I'd like the court to consider on those positions to bring them up to twenty-four, that'd be comparable to when the city starts, starts there.
To twenty-four?
Twenty-four, yes, sir. And it, uh, some of them, it's, some are over, but there's one, two, three positions there.
There's three that's not.
Sir.
There's three that's not.
Three that don't make sense.
But all your base pays would have to get readjusted.
Three and then the fourth one on the bottom, National Park, that's a hundred percent. Well, we received, the county receives thirty-five thousand for, for those services. The court to consider those, those three positions there. We're flirting with critical there, I'm being serious.
What do you mean by flirting with critical?
Uh, I will speak to you in private on that, Commissioner.
We, we have one, we have one department that this court, previous courts, always does more for one department than everybody else and that's yours, Sheriff. I personally, and you're probably going to end up getting it, I personally don't agree with, I mean, if we're going to do this, then we need to go person by person and everybody in here can argue and I'll say the same thing over and over again. Everybody in here can argue that their person, their employees work just as hard or harder than, than yours. Everybody's in, I mean, and I agree with the patrol officers and I agree with what Commissioner Number One brought up. These people are certified, I agree with Mrs. Quintis. But now we're, we're going through and we're just going to, I mean, if we're going to do this, then are we going to do this for everybody else? I mean, where we're at right now, we're already going to spend more money than what we're collecting on our, on our, on our income, what, what our taxes are going to be.
Sure.
I'm, I'm, I'm just asking, I'm just asking for the court to consider it, you know, I'm just doing, I'm just doing my job.
But everybody, I mean, we're, the court's- Everybody can argue, I can come up here and argue that my guys are going to, you know, uh, we just went where our guys also got certified to, with the fires, but they're getting the same as everybody else. So, I mean, we're sitting here and arguing all day long, I just think that at some point, we need to put a foot down and say, you know, thank you so much, thank you, you know, whatever the court wants.
Thank you for listening, Commissioner.
Do you know, Sheriff, why there's, of the six positions there, three of them are below the base pay right now?
They're-
The base pay's twenty-two, you've got two at twenty and one at twenty-one, I believe.
Let me borrow your glass a minute, Commissioner, I'll see what you have.
And your communications?
Yes.
Well, our base pays were just raised.
Yeah.
Yeah, remember, we had done, I said, one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars, we raised it.
Okay, so that included in?
So, yeah, so all our base pays, basically, which this is the first time, I think, all the base pays got moved up.
Right.
Right?
I believe so, yes, sir.
Now, with the raises, naturally, with what they were making plus the raises, they're all going to be above, above the base pay. But the base pay was, was raised also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this, Paris? Go ahead, Ms. Cole, please come up here.
Hi, Cole, JP, precinct three. I would like to thank you and commend you because this is a very big job to determine the salaries of all of the county employees and to make things fair for everyone and to look at the welfare of the county and the financial responsibility of the county. I would like to say that for my particular office, I think that the pay raises were very generous. The chief deputy received the increase of eight point one percent. The deputy clerk of magistrations received eight point seven percent and the juvenile clerk, nine point five percent. So the larger percent was on the lower paid employees and I'm glad to see you have to help to bring them up. In my particular office, the staff was very pleased and I don't know, all of you have been here longer than me or most of you have been, but I don't believe I've ever seen anything like a nine point five, eight point seven or eight point one increase.
You know, and Judge, I mean, and I keep saying, you know, that we're trying to get them up close to where they should be.
Right.
And I think this is, I think the court has done a really good job trying to be as fair to everybody as possible. Across the board, it's a five point six percent increase.
That's it. Which is still more than I ever recall knowing about.
You know, and the thing is though, that our, our salary is where we started and I think we have, we all have the same issues with what we're, with what, where we're at now, at least we'll, hopefully we can train them and keep them versus train them and they go somewhere else. We've had issues in other departments and I'm sure yours, you know, they, they want to go somewhere else if they can make a little bit more money. And hopefully this will keep them there and you don't have to keep training them.
Well, I, I think this is a big step in that direction and my employees are very happy there. They, they enjoy their job and they work very, very hard and they were very pleased at the rate of increase.
You know, when I was running for office the first time, the couple of times that I came during the budget, I mean, the, the previous commissioners had always said that, you know, we were, they were trying to get everybody move up. When you just give percentages, it's hard because your people on the lower end, after four or five years, or ten years, they just get so far apart. Where this'll, you know, I, I think, you know, it started way before I got here, they were trying to get them closer together.
Right. Well, on behalf of my staff and myself, we all thank you, appreciate the fine job that you've done, and I hope you will go forward with it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Judge, there's not a, there's not a but, or nothing like that?
No, she's gonna wait till the other part later.
Okay, thanks, Judge.
I'm, I'm gonna wait till the officials comment. No buts.
Thank you, Judge.
I mean it sincerely.
Thank you.
Well, you know, you've done a good job with Judge Cole's office.
Thank you. Uh, come, uh...
Those checks will be distributed.
Okay, Judge, uh, Foss, come on up, please.
No.
No?
No. Commissioners, uh, oh, yeah, Foss, this is a peace pressing, too, and I myself want to commend you for this increase that, uh, you are proposing for the employees. I believe that, like Judge Cole said, it is a very generous increase, I'm sure they'll be happy, and I'm glad to, to, to see finally things coming together in a way of working together. And I really commend you for that, and I think the employees in general will be very happy with what you're proposing to hope. I just hope that the rest of the budget isn't cut dramatically to...
No, we didn't tell you about that part.
Anyways, I just wanted to say thank you so much, and I'm sure the employees would appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thank you. And Judge, like I said, at the first meeting, the pay raises, I did something wrong last year. We started discussing this in August, and I found out that that's not the right way to do it, let's start discussing it in May, because the salaries take eighty percent of our budget. So we discussed this and get it settled, we've got eighty percent of our budget already settled, now we work with the other stuff. But, uh, my approach is to attack what's the biggest part first, so, and the, and the commissioners, I, I have to congratulate the commissioners, they wanna work with us, and make sure that all of us get that. Thank you.
Judge, there's two, I'm sorry, we...
Go ahead.
There's two positions that, that I'd like to address. One of them is the community center coordinator. We changed her title to better reflect the need, and because of the fact that we felt she was underpaid, and, uh, I would like to see that base pay go up a little bit.
Page one.
Uh, page one forty-four. And the other is our road and bridge, uh, Commissioner's Office Secretary. You have, uh, an individual that's there now, or whoever's there in the future, that takes care of, uh, four county commissioners. And you're talking about all secretarial works of four commissioners, besides having to put up with our different moods and temperaments. Uh, she also helps out with the playgrounds, once in a while, the secretary comes in and helps out a little bit with a, helps out a little bit with the county business.
I don't think she's ever helped the secretary at the playgrounds.
Well, before you, she did.
Okay.
And, well, we can ask the secretary, but, uh, you know, again, she's, she's got a lot of responsibilities, and whoever's there, I think, uh, should be above a base pay of twenty-one, four fifty.
Okay, now, let me get this straight, Commissioner. Right now, the communication center coordinator, where the proposed budget would make twenty-three thousand, eight hundred.
Yes, sir.
So what would you...
I, I, I wanna see the base pay go up, Judge, the base pay's at twenty-one, four fifty.
Okay.
So you wanna see the base pay?
I, I would like to see that go up at least to twenty-four, and the same with the base pay of the, uh, Road and Bridge Commissioner's, uh, Secretary.
So you're gonna go to twenty-four, and you're gonna give her another two hun, or a hundred and ninety-two dollar raise?
Uh, yeah.
And she's already at nine percent, she's already making a nine percent raise.
That is just, uh, something I would like to see.
Okay.
Returning, uh, the community center, uh, Sandra Velas, uh, had been reclassified concerning her title, she was classified as secretary, now she's a center coordinator. Now, we need to take into consideration that she's the only county employee taking care of our community center, which is very active, Monday to Friday, with different agencies going in there, providing service to the community, social security office, food distribution. I'd like for us to, uh, move her up on her pay, but she's a, you know, center coordinator. I, I, I'd like to see her making twenty-five thousand at least. And that's, uh, on the motion.
Okay, there's a motion, so you would, I, I still don't understand, you would, what she's making, with the increased pay, uh, pay increase, she's gonna be making twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and two dollars and eighty-two cents, so you wanna increase it more or less to twelve hundred dollars more?
More or less, yes, Judge, uh, y- you know, she's the only county employee there, and I don't know how many of y'all have been in there, but that place gets busy. I mean, there's a lot of people in and out, and, 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 uh, she coordinates every event, and, and, like I said, food distribution, and we have social security office, uh, there Monday to Friday. And, uh, you know, I, I think they would be fair to bring her up to twenty-five.
So your motion is to make her pay just coming here for twenty-five?
Yes, sir.
Did you make a motion, Commissioner?
No, he didn't.
No, I didn't make a motion, it was just a, an opinion.
But is this the Commissioner's secretary making the, making more than twenty-four already?
She makes twenty-six.
Yes, but I, I think that within six months or so, our, our, uh, secretary will be retired, uh, again, this is my opinion. And in order to, uh, have a person that is qualified to do the job that is required in that office, needs a higher base pay than twenty-one thousand.
You're talking about the base pay?
Just the base pay, that's what I'm listening to.
We might need to revisit the base change or not re-though, because it looks like some of the base pays are flipped. Um, instead of being the base pay, they're showing as last year's salary, and the base pay is, um...
Oh, but I don't know if you understood this, Miss, uh, I said that, that we adopt this, whatever we adopt, we're gonna add it to the base base, it's just a line item.
But the base pays that are on this proposal are not the real base pay, of some positions.
Right, so if we adopt something, we're gonna add it to that position that's coming here, whatever.
But you're adding it to, well...
The seventeen thirty-seven, like one percent more.
We, but we're, we're getting off, we have a motion.
Okay, there's a motion? I need a second.
Motion is to what?
To increase your pay to twenty-five.
That's a fourteen percent, fourteen and a half percent.
I know, but it's a one-time, uh, thing, and, and, I, I mean, y'all need to consider...
Well, you have a motion.
Certain position.
You have a motion, he needs a second, if not, then it fails.
Well...
There's no second.
Okay, so let's move on, any other discussion?
Just getting back to the base pay, we could just look at them again one more time, and, and maybe later, I can point out the way that they're flipped, especially the four point.
Okay.
I've got, I've got an issue on, we've got a lot of part-time employees, and their hourly rates are anywhere from seven twenty-five to ten, eleven, twenty-five dollars an hour, they're, they're all over the place. Um, we've got two elevator operators at nine ninety-two an hour, part-time. We've got a librarian, part-time librarians, at seven twenty-five an hour. Um, we've got people in the tax assessor's office at eight twenty-four an hour. We've got people in, I think, the county clerk's office at different ones. We, we seem to be all over the place with this hourly rate on these part-time employees. Me personally, I can't, I, I understand the need for part-time, but personally, I have a huge issue with nine twenty, nine ninety-two an hour for a guy to run an elevator, and seven twenty-five an hour for a guy, or for people at the library for part-time. I mean, we gotta get the, the salaries back within a, a set number, they're, they're too far out of place. Uh, I think they need to be re-looked at, I'm not gonna make a motion to do this, I think they need to be re-looked at, and we need to get a, a part-time salary that is set county-wide for all part-time employees.
I, I, I would agree with that.
And we could just tip that with the new position, because we're gonna...
They're ju, they're just too far apart, I mean, they're just way too far apart.
Okay. Judge, I'd like to go back to the, uh, position at the community center, I would like to make a motion that, that, uh, base pay be brought up to twenty-four thousand.
Second.
There's a motion, and a second, to bring the base pay, community center, twenty-four thousand.
Include, you wanna include the Commissioner's secretary?
Yes.
I, I will amend my motion to do that.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nobody? Twenty-four thousand, yes.
I also want to address, we got a list from, uh, Juanita on the new threshold for overtime, and I know you're reviewing that issue, I think, or you're not, or you are...
I've already, I've already sent an email to her, but when she sent me the memo, she, she said it's before she sends them, she would like to, for me to review it.
Okay.
And my response to her basically is that I don't agree with her classifications or reclassifications, all the positions, except for the jail monitor, because I don't, I don't know if that thing with the jail monitor does. She also sent, um, the, how does she figure out if somebody's exempt questionnaire, and those positions that she is saying are non-exempt, non-exempt, um, fall within the questionnaire, like the court reporter, she hasn't certification, so...
Well, I know, like, the elected officials is not gonna fall within that rule, but...
The elected officials are not classified.
Okay, I know, but they're on our list that we got, so, uh, I was trying to clarify.
Longer list than...
Um, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen people that are on this list that according to the new threshold, depending on how it works, are gonna be drawing, uh, comp time, or overtime.
One of the, also, on, on Dobbin's, he gets a supplement from the state.
Yes, but that, that, we pay twenty-something of it.
Understand, but with the supplement, wouldn't that be included in it, I mean, because he's...
Yeah, I don't know if that thirty-seven includes, that thirty-seven...
Does not include what he gets from the state.
Well, see, it's, it's, that thirty-seven is different than what's in our budget.
Is it?
Because in our, so I don't know what his...
Well, I asked Juanita to look in, look into Dobbin's to check, I see what, exactly what he makes with that, with...
Yeah, 'cause he gets, I thought, I thought we paid half and they paid half, but, which would take him to forty-something.
Yeah.
But I don't know.
Getting back to the exemptions, there's an executive exemption, administrative, professional, computer employee exemption, outside sales, and highly compensated. So, um, the court reporter falls within the professional, court coordinator, administrative, uh, adminis, administrative assistant, depending on their job stat, but classifications would probably fall under administrative as well.
Okay.
Um, so, I don't know what...
Will we, can you be able to clarify this before we get our budget adopted, so we know what the net effect will be if we have to do something?
Sure, the, the key is, though, getting job descriptions.
Uh, Judge, I've got a thing here on, uh, my foreman, precinct four, what's that needle? All the foremen's for each precinct are exempt employees, and, uh, when you bring up his pay to forty-seven, six hundred, forty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars, you keep him at that status as an exempt employee, and that's increasing, uh, including his raise and everything, and, you know, a couple hundred dollars more.
Which one is that? Which one is that?
It's in the...
Page one fifty-five, on the regular deal, and then it's on the...
Whichever you want.
Yeah, it's at the very bottom of overtime, also.
Is that a formal motion?
Yes.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second, any more discussion on this? So how much would your increase increase at?
It's, uh, forty-seven thousand, six hundred.
So you call about two hundred dollars?
Yeah, base?
Two hundred. All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? If not, all those in favor, if they might say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nobody? Aye, you.
Would that include adjusting the base pay?
No, uh, the base pay's fine.
And Commissioner Nelson, you bring up a good point, that every time somebody gets an increase, you need to, uh, address whether or not it affects the base pay.
Yeah, because, I mean, if this guy leaves, then we're gonna be right back where we started from, if you don't adjust the base pay on this position, because it's a supervisory position. Uh, there's, there's really no way to get around it.
Well, it, it's like...
You wanna do it later, in case it comes up, or what do you wanna do?
No, we'll just do it later.
That's all.
Okay.
Yeah, it makes sense, though.
Can you have more discussion from anybody? Go ahead, Ms. Cole.
Good morning, Commissioner, County District, everybody. I just wanna thank you, myself, I didn't wanna leave here without thanking you, thank you all for your generosity, goodness, than anything, I wanna thank you for the base pay. Because being that I won, on one of the JPs, it started with two new clerks at nineteen thousand, it was, you know, it was a little hard. But I wanna thank you for also changing the base pay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, then this means a gurk, thank you for coming. That's it, Commissioner.